Good night. I'm starting to gavel, but it is 7:00 P. M. Thursday. Time to call the September 19th, 2022 Westfield, Washington Township Advisory Plan Commission meeting in order. Will staff please confirm the consent for the quorum?
Ms. Berkman?
Here.
Mr. Deck? Mr. Horkey?
Here.
Mr. Johns? Dr. Callahan?
Here.
Mr. Maui?
Here.
Mr. McCarty?
Here.
Mr. Schmitz?
Here.
Ms. Bulljarrett?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. And first is the approval of the minutes of our September 6th. Twenty twenty one, wait, yeah, 2020. We have approved the August 15th.
That might be a technical last. Coming pace should be September 6th.
Online agenda says September 6th.
So that's the thought we were going to. Let's not reach your style like that. Item next is brutal with minutes of our previous meeting, September 6th, 2022. Is there a motion to approve these minutes?
Can I make motion to approve events for September 6th?
And motion? And we have a second, I believe, from Kristen Berkman, motion from Andrea Maui. Staff, please call a roll.
Ms. Berkman?
Yes.
Mr. Horkey?
Yes.
Dr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Maui?
Yes.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Mr. Schmitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bulljarrett?
Yes.
Thank you. Will staff please review the rules and procedures for tonight's meeting? And because I'm thinking about that for a moment, since we have no virtual attendees tonight, we could have done the minutes with a voice vote.
Close anyways.
For our new adopted.
Well, Mike, Mike is supposed to be on.
He was supposed to be, but he's not.
He's not.
After all.
Okay.
Mike is not present.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so this is a workshop meeting of the plan commission. So our general rules of conduct and procedures will be for each petition, the department will introduce the petition stating when the item was last before the plan commission. The plan commission and petitioner will then discuss the changes made to the ordinance using the issue list as a guide for discussion and also discuss any further changes that are warranted. Once discussion is finished, the department will summarize the final changes that are expected to be made prior to the petition returning for a recommendation. For our rules of conduct, we ask you, please not disrupt the proceedings in any way. If you need to have a private discussion, please quietly exit the room. Please silence your devices at this time. And again, if you must answer them, please quietly exit the room. No one is attending virtually this evening, so we do not need to remind anyone to speak into the microphone. So that was all.
Thank you. There are no consent agenda items tonight, so we move right into workshop items, first of which is addition 2205-PUD-09-I Beach 31 Grand Park PUD. This item is here for both a workshop discussion and we can also consider suspending the rules and make a recommendation to council to finalize this. And so. Do the staff, your main report, please.
Good evening, APC members. For the record, Ryan Collingwood of the Community Development Department. Data presented before you tonight is the I Beach 31 at Grand Park PUD. This proposal is a change in zoning requests for about three acres, which is located north of 181st Street and east of the future Grand Park Boulevard extension. Since the September 6th APC discussion meeting, key changes the petitioners have provided include revised ordinance language in putting a distinct definition of the permitted uses as well as additional language clarifying the role of substantial compliance within the district. In addition, visual elements have also been provided to the concept plan, which include identifying defense and trash enclosure locations. This item is before you this evening for a recommendation. In order to vote on the petition, the commission will need to suspend Article 4, Section 1.5B of the rules of procedure for this item. The petition was introduced at the April 11th City Council meeting and received its public hearing at the May 4th APC meeting. The petition has received no public comments to date. President of the Districts tonight are Eric Dowfitt of Church Church Hiddle and Antrim and Katie Connor, owner of I Beach. I believe Mr. Dowfitt intends to speak of the updated details of the project. If not, we'll just have a discussion. They are available for to answer any questions as am I, should you have any for staff. Thanks.
Thank you.
First of all, thank you guys very much. I appreciate you having us here. So last and first, I think this process is great, and I think that this process, this particular project, it's going much more smoothly throughout the. The biggest, the changes that we talked about the last meeting, I think have all been incorporated here, specifically in 2.1, we've updated the language, making sure that the restaurant and bar area were ancillary, ancillary uses. We've updated the idea of substantial compliance. We have engineered the site so it's going to be a 200 by 100 building or an 80 by 250 building, it's going to be 2,000 square feet. But obviously that would modify slightly the layout of the parking lot. The parking lot will be in the same general area. We'll see the northeast corner is where the all volleyball courts are going to be. Couple of the other changes, I just put points that use my laser in there. The dumpster enclosure is going to go right here. I got that right, yeah. This red is where you see the fence. We've moved the trees, as we talked about, to the west and to the north. We don't want trees around the volleyball because it will impact the play of the volleyball. If we go to elevations real quick to the next. Great. And then there was a question about the west side of the building specifically. So taking your advice, we've modified same material, but put a different color on it and gone with a different direction. We moved a couple of the girls to the west as well to give it some depth. We've added a couple of garage doors. Those are western facing, so those lighted will not have windows because during the course of play, as the sun's coming down in the evening, that could come in and get your player's eyes, but you don't anticipate that's going to be the case. And we wrapped around on the north, on the southwest side, we wrapped around in color to liberate, and we had it on the front and had it on the southeast side as well. The front back elevation, they're essentially the same, like we turned that band, if you see that question. You can see what we're looking at with those as well. I think that addresses everything that we talked about at the last meeting, and I appreciate taking any questions. And again, I appreciate the process and.
Thank you. Of the dialogue, if there is any.
I have a question for staff, if wouldn't mind. I noticed that the dumpster enclosure, it looks like it's, you can't really tell because it looks like it's going to be oriented toward the front facade, and I just want to make sure we don't have a problem with our normal development plan review process where that wouldn't be our standard, like if we had to approve something separate in this PUD to make sure that that was okay to do.
No, it, our current ordinance, our UDO prohibits dumpster enclosures within an established front yard, which would be in front of the building line. And I believe it says where possible, they shouldn't be oriented toward a street or residential, but in most cases that's not possible. And this is, I mean largely oriented toward a building, so we, that would not get called out as an issue during development plan.
But I was just trying to make sure we weren't in trouble later. Thank you.
I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
There was some discussion about whether there might be a need for retention, which would change a lot of things, and you thought that maybe this was part of a larger.
There will be no need for retention on this.
Okay, because they've taken care of it as for the whole. Thanks.
It drains to legal journey to the.
Okay.
Anything else from anyone?
Just one other question. I know it, there was discussion about landscaping along the west side since Willface Grand Park Boulevard. Those are going to be like shade trees or.
Those are all one metal trees. Under the definition of the UDO, that can be either conifers, but for happy, if people want those conifers or. But yeah, those will be on the west side, these are all painted one metal tree. These are the shade trees.
Okay.
I actually asked Ryan earlier today, I think that with the UDO, there's supposed to be some foundation planning along our two to break it up, even though it's not showing on the.
There would be, there would have to be foundation plans. I absolutely agree. This isn't showing there, but there are going to have to be foundation plans against the building on the west, on the west side and on the north side. I absolutely agree.
So that's in the PUD?
That's it, yeah.
That's the UDO status. That would, that would apply, right.
Okay.
The only thing we got is another, their five foot beds instead of eight foot.
Right. I do, yes, thank you.
I do feel really good about parking.
We do.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, okay. So I don't know where you'd go for overflow, you know, so. I just want to bring, you know, I've seen two businesses this weekend that were way over.
No place to go here.
No, there's no place to, but just wanted to ask one more time. I, I just want to thank you for what you've done about west side, and I hope that you feel good about it as well, because I think it's become a billboard for your business now. And so people driving down Grand Park Boulevard in the future, they don't know your business, and they say, what's going on over there? That looks really cool. And stuff like that. So I know there's been some bumps to get here, but I really like what we've done. I think it's great. So thank you. Thanks for your patience.
I agree. Appreciate the patience and continued dialogue. If there's no other questions, comments, or things to bring up during this part of the discussion, is there a motion to suspend Article 4, Section 1.5B?
To suspend rules of Article 4, 1.5B?
Sorry, it's a motion from Victor McCarty and a second from. Will staff please call a roll?
Ms. Berkman?
Yes.
Mr. Horkey?
Yes.
Dr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Maui?
Yes.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Mr. Schmitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bulljarrett?
Yes.
We are ready then to send a recommendation to council, is there a motion in regards to that?
Make a motion, send positive, favorable recommendation on the council?
Sorry, that's from Victor McCarty, seconded by. And then staff, please pull a roll.
Mr. Horkey?
Yes.
Dr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Maui?
Yes.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Mr. Schmitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bulljarrett?
Yes.
Ms. Berkman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate your time. Good luck. Thank you.
Our other item of the workshop business tonight is addition 2205-PUD-16 Westfield Yard.
As soon as I was just like.
We didn't do anything. I didn't think of anything.
Next to me was it?
Yes.
All right. We've introduced this, the technicalities have been addressed. Is there a staff presentation to open this?
Not as formally as what we just heard for I Beach. Just quickly, just to remind everybody, this went to public hearing back in August, I believe. So this property and the petition will, we'll get more into the details of it, but this is on the far western edge of our jurisdiction, just South St. Row 32 and Gray Road area. So go ahead, John.
My name's John, for the record, John, I was shaving with also a crack of a reaper represent of Fisher and Grant Communities. With us this evening, our client, Amanda Webb, Nate Hollander, both with Grant Communities. There are several adjustments that we made to the plan. Staff indicated we could follow one or two patterns. One would be to walk through those adjustments, which I would like to do. And then there was the issue list that was provided, that we did provide responses to. I may also go through and advise you where my adjustments there. But initially, what I'd like to do is go through the slides and show you the adjustments that have been made. The first slide that's shown here is of the concept plan. There's just some additional tweaks that were made to the plan. One thing that doesn't show up here, it's an older, one prior version of the, of the plan that. This. Oh, it doesn't want to pick up. I was agreeing with. The, the path will extend all the way up to the north property line along Gray Road there. Dog Park's identified at this point throughout the plan. So we had, had made adjustments to the total elevations. If we look at this, this is the test and elevation. These are the dwellings that are accessed via alley. And we were asked to make more consistent the front elevation. There were some varied roof lines and some other adjustments that were made. Now, this is more consistent across the front with the individual gables, the bump outs there along the front of the dwelling. And then additionally, on the side of rear elevations, we were asked to provide the masonry percentages on all four dwellings, and it had masonry on all four sides, which was done. So this is the rear end of the dwelling that would face internally towards the alley. It's got masonry full first floor as well as the side elevation, which you'll see here. And the one additional item that was added that you haven't seen because it wasn't in the recent little information was that they also enhanced the gable ends, ends of the building with this additional fiber cement panel treatment. So it's board battening, and then it all being horizontal siding across that front edge, that was an additional enhancement after we went back and looked at the notes from the meeting was a suggestion. This is the Burke Line elevation. The Burke Line is the dwellings that access via the street in terms of the garage. So this is the front elevation before we had some very reclines. I'll call it more modern. That's a bad explanation, but it's just what I have. But I can divide it. The side rear elevation is over here as well. And again, you'll see the, the side elevation, gable end treatment, first floor masonry on all four sides of the dwelling as prescribed in the ordinance. The way the ordinance is set up is assessed, it provides written standards, but it also says that the dwelling shall be substantially compliant with the elevations that were included in the order, which are these elevations. There was one question, and Ms. Bulljarrett followed up with me this afternoon indicating that she would like some additional explanation on the dwellings adjacent to the Midland. Our plan is that all 75, we only have 75 dwellings. This is a relatively small neighborhood, and all the dwellings are the three-story townhomes that we just showed you. And there was, in the notes that Cindy provided earlier, she wanted to see some consistency with, with Bonterra that was down the street. Bonterra has some, has two-story and three-story dwellings. The two-story dwellings are closest to the Midland. In that situation, along the south edge of Bonterra, along the Midland, there, there are no existing, there's no existing tree lines. There were some trees there, I think last time I was passed going along the Midland. What was there was removed, and I'm just, that's just an observation. I'm assuming it was allowed to be removed as part of the plan. They haven't been told to stop. So the one thing here, we have, we have an existing tree line that's pretty mature and significant, 40 to 60 foot tall shade trees that are in place today, as well as if you get up right on the backside of that, I've got a couple of other elevations. You'll see that there's about, there's a crest somewhere in the middle, but there's also a mound that's generally between two and four feet that runs along there as well. So those trees are straddling either side of the fence row, some on the city's, what I'll call the city side of the property line in the, in the old railroad right away, and then others straddling on the north side of our site, which will be preserved as part of the buffer along that edge. This just gives you another idea. These are images from Google Earth to give you an idea. This is where the pipeline crosses. There's another piece that's undeveloped, and then further to the west is the edge, which includes the Bonterra. But this just gives you an idea. There's about six homes that are adjacent to ours. Many have six-foot privacy fences on them, and then there's a combination of single-story and two-story homes along that edge.
Can I ask a question, or you want me to wait till you're open?
Oh, go ahead.
Does the city own the Midland? Is it developed there, or is that just?
They do. There's a intervening separately dated parcel of real estate between us and the neighborhood in the south.
Okay.
It's approximately 30 feet.
Okay. And there's still a question as whether those trees will stay or not?
No, there's not a question. They'll be preserved as part of our development plan.
Okay, the electric company or Duke Energy as well?
I, I can't tell you what Duke's going to do in the future, but.
But right now.
And they don't, they have one of, there's like one of six different plans. This is the, in my, our, my understanding, but the least preferable of the six different paths.
Okay.
Because my understanding is the city's at least communicating or becoming more vocal in its opposition to this path, because it would require the removal of.
All of those.
Most, if not all, that corridor. If you've ever been down there, you know, line program, there's a daycare, there's other uses, that's, it's 100% trees almost through the whole mile.
Right.
And that condition doesn't exist if they, for instance, I'm not telling them where you go. If they went south. They went south on 169 Street and then was, which is one of the options. It's all within the city's right of way and generally absent of a lot of mature trees.
Okay. Thanks.
And then the last image we have, this is a bird's eye from the south looking generally north. You can see the office building along St. Row 32 at the top edge of the image, the tree line that exists there today. All the trees are on the north side of the path, with the exception of significant amount of trees at the front end of the neighborhood here, and then some within the rear yard of the one home that you see there next to the one with the red fence. But this provides a pretty significant transition, whether or not the building heights are two stories or three stories, where it's going to be screened almost fully. Or when I say screen, there's, there's going to be a tree line there. I hate to say screening, because you don't need to screen from one residential use next to the other, but nonetheless, the tree line exists, and it's going to provide a softening of whatever is built there in the future.
You need to transition between, what was this, an S F 3 and then S F A?
Correct. And one of the other comments that came up as part of the issue list, it's the first one, the comprehensive plan identifies the area for a little commercial. And so I went back and I looked, I said, well, so what would be the expectation of somebody who lived there if there was a commercial which proposed for the site? And so that we don't, either general office or general business have 50 and 60 foot in the heights that are permitted under the standards. And then I went back, I looked at the state of 32 overlay, and the state of 32 overlay requires a minimum 18-foot building height and establishes no maximum, that even, it even specifies, while it's not a requirement, that multiple stories are encouraged. That's what it says in the language. So if I put my shoes in the, if I put myself in the shoes of the neighbor to the south, since the 32 overlay was adopted, which has been a significant amount higher than the existing comprehensive plan since 2007, what, what might I expect to go there? Multiple-story commercial buildings and we're proposing a residential alternative that includes three-story. I'm not just putting in anything in perspective, kind of.
No, I get it.
Very good idea of what would be the outlook that everyone would.
So you will be doing a tree inventory and the formal tree preservation thing?
It, it's required through the development plan before site construction, we'd have to do an inventory, because some of the trees may be removed if they're determined by the arborist to be those that would create a safety hamstring. So if there's dead or damaged.
Right.
Those would be thinned out and removed along that. But the standards in the ordinance would require the preservation of the trees for us to meet the buffer standard in terms of plantings. If, if for whatever reason, there were two or three in a row that had to be removed for that purpose determined by the arborist, it would be replaced better one.
Okay.
So in terms of.
Could you clarify, there's a really thin piece of land there to the east side of the parcel that, no, on this area that you're interested in, but it was like your concept plan, what around it?
Is it shaded, the area that's kind of shaded by?
If you go north on Gray Road, it bears off to the left.
Yeah, when the state realigned, right, because it was offset in past grade, the intersection was offset, they, they, the state purchased additional right of way so that they could make the alignment that they wanted to see with a dedicated left turn lane on the northbound.
Okay.
You can't see it here, but that's the reason it's not, the right of way isn't straight, the right of way is, is very, because the state purchase on the additional right of way in the intersection.
Those maintenance on that, or who knows that section?
Oh, it would be thus. Across our frontage, it would be the HOA. It's in terms of who has jurisdiction. I think there's, in general, it's like a 150 or 200 foot offset from the intersection where the state maintains jurisdiction of the local road because of the improvements that they made for the dedicated lot. But I'll defer to staff. I'm not, I'm not certain on that.
Yeah, and then I know for Gray Road, Moon Town Road, the city of Westfield has an agreement with the city of Noblesville, who maintains the right of way. We have part of the road, and they have another part instead of doing half and half. I think they, one has North of 32, the other has South 32. But just to clarify, are you asking about the right of way piece, or are you asking if there's a separate parcel between that building on 32 and the road?
Gray Road.
Because there is another parcel directly east of that existing building showing on 32 and Gray Road. So if that's, so just north of that.
Cindy was worried about that at the public hearing, what would go in that particular spot if this housing's approved? Do we leave corner stop that might be unusable? And I, I don't know. But on their concept plan, it comes even back from that parcel, and there's just this little piece.
Yeah, and that, that's what he was talking about, the right of way. That is right.
It was in time when the state made the, when the state made the improvement, they purchased additional item and made.
That other parcel to the north, that, that's already a separate parcel, right? I think it's even under separate ownership. So if somebody wanted to develop that parcel in the future, they would go through probably a similar process as this, I'm guessing. I mean, it's not very wide, it's like 130 feet wide. I mean, something could go there. It's not, I, I mean, I don't know what that could be, but it's not, it's not too small to not do something with in the future. I don't think.
But it may need variants or something to go to build there because of the limited width.
Listen, then only Bob Robey was here.
Yeah. That's why I thought he was here.
Thank you.
So John, something keeps getting me because of, you know, going back to that local commercial issue, and you've got an arterial here and it's going to, you know, but, and with 32 expansion, you're talking about a fairly significant kind of corner section here that's founded by the Midland and then up to 32. It does seem like it could be developable for a decent commercial business.
Well, here's the, the, one of the challenges behind that is that the pipeline company has very stringent rights on what can and can't occupy these. And one of those is you can't, we can only cross it, we can only cross it generally at 90 degrees, and you can't do any parking or navigating on the top of it. So if, it, it really, because it crosses at right angles, the way it does, if you can see there, it, it doesn't lend itself very efficiently at all for a commercial use because of the size of those commercial buildings and the need for third park. You wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to lay it out in a manner that, that made it. And well, it's not that you can't do it, it just doesn't make it efficiently viable for commercial use.
See what you're saying.
If not for the pipeline, then with the surface park, it'd been a matter that was, was more efficient.
Is Gray Road a primary or a secondary, I'm curious?
Primary.
I think it's primary.
So it's 100, it's 150 feet right, right away.
100 feet is secondary.
Primary.
And again, so you're talking about, you know, primary on primary here, basically at the intersection. It's something to consider. It really is, because it should probably be commercial. Especially with that substation going across the way. My brain just keeps going back. My brain just keeps going back to that and and again, knowing that what's being proposed, I, I'm pretty stuck on that whole two-story there because if we're if we're gonna keep this residential here, then I'd really like to see it stay low, especially if butting the Midland on. In all honesty, if this was commercial, you wouldn't have a three-story commercial office there just because we don't really see much of that in a location like this. I mean, in all honesty, say retail, you're not gonna see a three-story retail building. You know what I mean?
It's a crucial of the comprehensive plan. I would want to inject any of those people who put together the plan of a.
Right. Right. I'm just, I'm thinking about be more office kind of related or restaurant or something like that.
It's a. There's some sites that we true refer to like in-between sites where the, I mean, there's a a critical mass of some retail and zone retail at Hazel Dell on really both the southeast, well, all, all four corners. There's one today and still, still filling out. And that critical mass allows them to attract the uses that you're talking about whether it's a restaurant or a small office and those types of things. And then we jump over to the site front of the program. There, there are still outlots that are in front of Kroger's along State Route Thirty-two as well as on Carroll Road that, that are yet to be developed twenty years outside, not twenty, thirty, seventeen, gone seventeen since this center started being developed in two thousand and five. That, that aren't being used today. So this, not that it has to happen tomorrow, but this location is one that's not gonna attract, not gonna generate that critical mass of retail that, that one would wanna find and, and supporting those types of uses like a small office or service or restaurant. Those other locations as well, the site front of Kroger's or the site of Hazel Dell. There's a large retail format that's known for that intersection today as a thousand dollar.
In the long run, I can just see that whole area right there getting redeveloped. I mean, not in the next ten years maybe, but further down the road that even on the Noblesville side being, you know, making commercial actually, I can see it. But you still haven't really said why you didn't consider the two-story.
Well, it had, it had been considered. It was that the product location and the buffer that exists today made sense and, and that we only have seventy-five lots. There's only seventy-five lots in development. By locating it and doing two product, I don't like that few lots. And our client didn't feel like that was appropriate. If we had a hundred and fifty or two hundred lots, that would make some sense because then there would be a again, a critical mass of the two of the product type. But here with only seventy-five because they didn't view it as being feasible. Doesn't mean you like it, it's just that's their experience.
Did you actually finish your presentation, John? Questions that started the interview here?
Along the, the issue list and a couple of items that I didn't touch on yet, adjustments made for clarifying antimonoty, which is in the ordinance. Addressing the rear elevations with additional materials. Amenities that we, I think I almost got there. So the amenities on site. Are gonna include the pathways, the seating areas, dog park, the two trail connections, low maintenance living, which is in general, it's all maintained by the HOA. There's no outside maintenance that is done by the individual owners and the sidewalks throughout the community. And, and that's pretty consistent with the level of amenities that was proposed for Monterae, even in, in the, where seventy-five lots there, I believe a hundred and fifty. I'll stand corrected if this is a number. So there was one more thing about those, I think, all of ours, the funds, and we remove that. We also increased the square footage in fifteen hundred square feet, which is the standard at Monterae as a point of reference. Do two thousand square foot or we get out the twenty-three hundred square feet for the. That, that contains everything.
Okay, thank you.
One last thing that our client, we reduced the building groupings before. There were eight, a lot of eight-unit buildings. And we reduced it down. There wasn't three before and there were eight, four, five and six unit building. Danger is most evident along the north and south perimeter of the site. These were, these before and they're gonna appear and there's a three, this might have been a three unit.
It looks like you actually went from fifteen on that border on the Midland to eighteen. Is that correct?
Let me check.
I mean, at least literally along the line. Did you move that one that is diagonal?
Yeah, moving the one that was, there were total twenty, one was diagonally directed along the unique paths in line with the others. And there were two eight-unit buildings and a five-unit building out there. All right, the three, six unit buildings.
Another discussion?
Comparing this to Monterae, not directly next to, but on the other side of what will then your one build between the two projects. Comparing it, uh, Monterae has a business, zone business frontage along Thirty-two. This obviously is not because it already has business just to the north of it. So for me, I understand where, yes, this is zone for commercial, but when you're just comparing it to what's already been approved for the area in all fairness, kind of have to go along with that. I wouldn't say again to your point, John, with this having the gas pipeline between it, would this be the best use of commercial in the future? Don't know. And that might be ten, twenty years in the future, just because of the way this, this entire area is progressing. Hopefully, whenever the lot between this and Monterae gets sold off or developed or whatever it is, the north side that's also along Thirty-two, that will be utilized for business as well. But with this being pocketed in the back, I almost envision this area as a mixed use. I'm all for mixed use and with the business already being established, this is bringing the residential aspect to it. And with it connecting to the Midland, I know people on New Peter using that as an amenity to ride their bike down to Cobra or whatever gets developed on Noblesville side in the future. Not, not necessarily to right there across, but I know on the Hazel Bay or Hazel Dell area, there's, there's been some rumblings of what else they're gonna build in there. So in, in terms of residential, just in fairness with what's been previously approved, I think this is a fair description.
Just for everybody's knowledge here, Noblesville, I'm looking at their comp plan now. I think it was adopted in twenty and you guys may have way more knowledge about this than I do, but I'm just now learning about this. They are showing the area immediately east of here to be what they're calling mixed residential, which again, quickly kind of skimming here, it looks like it's it is kind of a mixed-use type of building is what they're looking for. Really on both sides of Thirty-two at this intersection, on the note again, on their side, so.
With a, with a pocket of commercial at.
Right, their main, their main retail, commercial, clearly they're focusing that down at Hazel Dell.
There was a proposal for commercial zoning at the northeast part years ago, that, and not too long, maybe six, five to six years ago, that was not received very.
Yeah.
John, I have a the picture of your landscaping, you have a in the ordinance, Kevin?
Kevin, are you able to pull up the ordinance and?
Before we go there, let me ask a question about this one. You have a twenty-foot setback as your perimeter on, I think, all four sides separate?
I believe so, yes.
It looks like there's more than twenty feet between those yellow boxes and.
There, there is because we'll be dominated along that south perimeter. Is the ten-foot tree preservation area, the twenty-foot drainage easement, we can't get into the existing trees because it'll run against the idea of preservation.
Okay.
So we've got the ten-foot preservation area and twenty-foot drainage easement, and then there's gonna be a five-foot private water line even on that to serve the individual units. So while twenty-foot is the setback prescribed in the ordinance, I guess we could change that because it's to the closest point of the structure is between thirty and thirty-five feet. And it has a patio or a deck on and that's, that's including that space. So because actually the base of the dwelling is thirty-five to forty feet.
Yeah, and I guess that's what I'm beginning at. If that's what it's gonna be, I just assume see it in the ordinance. So that somebody doesn't come along later and say, I'm not gonna do that. I'm gonna tear those trees down. You know, I mean, I, I don't know what will happen in the future, but if that's your intent and it doesn't hurt you to actually, you know, modify that, I would appreciate it. And the other thing on that picture is it's on the eastern border. Like my concerns are the southern border because there are people living in homes there. And it sounds like you're doing a reasonable job of addressing that. On Gray Road, it looked like the setback was a whole lot more than twenty feet. It had a path and everything, so.
It's due to existing easements. There's an existing, I believe, it'll see a future thing water line that runs along the road that's outside of the future right of way. So that's why that space looks so big. Today you've got pavements, pavements way over here.
Right.
The water company says, I don't wanna be subject to removal of utilities if I can obtain an easement further away. So when you talk, you said, I think it's a seventy-five foot half. So you've got the existing pavement today, seventy-five foot half. It's like thirty feet of grass between there and the actual property line.
Right.
Beyond that, there's a water line easement that requires us to have a better, bigger setback.
So you'll be more than twenty feet on that side also.
I believe so.
I believe so. It depends how much privacy. It's definitely dedicate like a way or will be more than twenty feet, yes.
Okay, and that's, that's another thing. If you, if you know or, you know, can find out a reasonable number because that picture shows me a whole lot more than twenty feet. So I, I like to match pictures and ordinances.
Well, let's take a look at that. I, I know one consideration that we've had is that because of the existing pipeline easement, it can store water, interest standards, things are starting to get light.
Right, I get it, I get it.
While we might be able to say it's not twenty foot setback, it may be that it's a thirty, thirty-five. As shown here, it may be closer to forty.
I'm just asking if you'd be a closer, what you think it will really be, if that would make you more comfortable and I can make it easier for staff to not have to deal with issues in the future if somebody else should choose to develop this. And then I was going to my real question was the, the picture of the landscaping.
That's a lot of ability based on the landscaping.
Right.
It's, it's their thing.
Those are the front load.
Correct.
How are you gonna get all that landscaping in the ten?
It, it looks quite a lot like what it is. The smaller dots, those are shrubs and grasses. There's one tree.
Right.
In that space, the, the large, this large.
That's a shade tree, yeah.
Is a shade tree. The rest are shrubs.
Okay, I thought there was an ornamental in, in some of those, but maybe not. Okay. If you can do it, that's great. I just looked at that and I looked at the other picture and I thought there's like about one by four piece of grass there.
Yeah, I do appreciate your comment because we're, we're doing some discussion with engineering about about the shade trees in that space because typically outside of the right of way, there's a twenty-foot utility easement in that space. And that, that, those trees and shrubs are in that, in that human space. And different projects that have had the townhomes in them. There's kind of some have and some haven't. And it's been looked out between planning and engineering after the, after the fact. So we, we do wanna reach a conclusion about that before we get through.
Yeah, and that's where I am because I, I don't want you to come back and say, well, this is what we said. We were gonna do, but we can't do it now. Like, what are we gonna, we wanna?
And the other thing, I think staff is, the city's become much more aware of it because if you draft through anybody's name, there there's trees all over the place that people try, right? And and technically in almost every neighborhood, there's either a twenty or twenty-five foot utility outside the right of way. So go from, really go from the backside, if I walk into your lot twenty feet and there's the potential exists that there shouldn't be trees there because they're subject to the utility provider.
Right.
And whether or not people pay attention as to whether or not where the utilities actually are.
Right.
So.
And for me, at least, you know, a part of this is we have landscaped your apartments in our U D O that were updated, you know, several years ago when Jesse redid a lot of the U D O. And we're losing a lot of trees and I, and everybody wants to have fewer trees, you know, in their P U Ds. And I just, I don't like that trend and I don't want it to continue. If we can put them somewhere else, I'm happy about that, but.
Well, I'm glad because our ordinance specifies that if we can't provide it in a circular location, we have to.
Leave it somewhere else.
It is permitted to go somewhere else.
Yeah, I saw that.
Director's decision.
Yeah, I saw that.
It's not lesser, it's just that's where our reference is and if we can't provide it there, we go somewhere else.
That's it.
Thank you. Others, thoughts, comments, questions?
I guess I'd like to go back to this conversation about the two-story there along the Midland. I walked back yesterday and I don't believe there's anything else along there that's three stories. The you all did the neighborhood that's across, not exactly across from this parcel, but. Yes. So those have, I don't know, single family along the trail and then it goes back into some townhomes. Correct?
Where?
There's really, there's a mix along that frontage. There's a two-story product.
Are we talking about?
By Kroger.
Okay.
Kind of daycare process.
Okay.
But on the south side of the Midland.
Predominantly ranches, used to, is it, I can't remember. Yeah, it's associated, the east is predominantly ranch homes. And to the west, it's predominantly two-story and the original approved was for the multi-story, the three-story condominiums that are all in that section.
So that really transitions well off the Midland though through that section with the trees. And I'm just afraid this is really going to be tall along there. There's just nothing else.
You go to that, you go to that side?
There's a little crease along that.
Your, your site?
So, so this, the, there were, originally there was a plan, this is a three-story condominium building. Originally that plan was for more of that same type of product industry that we became back through into the the ranches. The homes in here generally is sold for four hundred and twenty to four hundred and forty thousand, somewhat based on supposed on. So three-story condominium building, single-family homes all around it with folks paying four hundred plus for those ranch homes.
Huge space between the two also.
When we talk about the transitions and everything, it hasn't, this, the three, the three-story building within that town or that condominium building is all large because they're front, back in unit.
Right. Yeah, it's a big tall building. It's not particularly.
It's, it's bigger than what we're talking about with the townhomes. I mean.
But it's a distance off the trail. I'm talking about the trail right now and people using the trail and feeling like they're walking through a lot of trees and it's wooded. And I understand you're preserving the trees, which I love. Thank you. But having a big building just past them, it, it's going to change the character of that trust of support without any such. And it was just something we really talked about with Monterae and the networks. Took those down and just figured out reason in maintaining that character. I just think it's important that we're focused on our trails and in keeping these. And I understand the development coming in, but keeping the character of our trails is an asset in our community. So I, I am concerned about having a huge.
And it would, and it would be for the sake of the protection of the public using the trail. Or I, I don't say it right, I mean, I that, that people using the trail would feel better with a two-story building there rather than a three-story building when they're using the trail. I'm trying to figure out why.
That's what I'm saying. I'm saying it feels more like a neighborhood as you walk down the trail and it feels wooded. Having a three-story building is, it's different. It's different than having a two-story.
Yes.
Which is. in, in context with what's across from this, because those are a lot of single.
They're one of a different bad or different good. And if we want to see two-story, I'm presuming you're referring that it's different bad.
The three-story?
Yeah.
I think that it feels not as residential like you're walking. I mean, a three-story building is different than single-family homes that are single-story or two-story. It just is.
I was surprised when I drove down Gray Road, that's the way I came tonight, that once I passed this piece of land, there was residential, it was maybe one and two-story, but it was all, it was a whole different low intensity feel. And I, and I think for me, it's not as much the trail, although I think we should pay attention when we go along our trails and have some kind of a, you know, a feel for the trail. It's not just walking through a town of buildings, which this is not. But I was surprised that the residential to the south really seemed to, it was just more open and lower and, and so for me, the two-story would be important because of the residential to the south more than the trail.
So not saying this is apples to apples. Retreat on the Monon is three-story. This is a view from the trail. I mean, I don't know that they're preserving this thick of a, of a, you know.
Those are honeysuckle.
I understand. I'm just saying, but, I mean, there will be some tree preservation along the trail that is going to very likely limit what you can see from the trail anyhow.
Not that that not that the three-story townhomes that are offensive.
Or that too.
Or not that, and there may be some people that would prefer to see three, two-story buildings there rather than three. But I, I just haven't heard a dialogue in the community that the three-story townhomes are are less appealing than two-stories. There's, give you a couple of other examples. There's homes in Bridgewater that are, there's a pocket there of three-story townhomes that exist adjacent to all Adams and Marshall at the time. And then they look at somebody else, single-family ranches. And kind of, and the closer, the closer together than either of the two examples that we just looked at to one another, but.
No, and to me, it's not, it's not three stories per se. It's kind of like I used to say, you can put two, did similar things next to each other as long as you transition and buffer and make it work, you know? So I don't know how to make it work. I'm concerned with how many trees are there. And I guess I go out, look at the tree line and see how wide that is. And is that enough buffer? Because to Kevin's point, yes, you can, you know, screen the trail so that you, I just don't know how well this is going to be done. So I don't know if there may be more pictures you can show, but I understand the concern of a three-story. And then without adequate buffering.
It's also green for, you know, half the year, you know? And these aren't evergreens that are shielding it, so.
Well, I understand our client, it's just, it's not that the plant commission is opposed. Well, I don't know. I'm asking you that, is the plant commission opposed to three-story dwellings along the trail at all?
I don't think so.
Commissioner, this.
I'm not either, depending on how they're, how far they're setback and buffering and transition and the attractiveness of the architecture behind the faces.
And I actually designed three-story building, I think it's nice to be honest. And I've seen all the buildings that we're discussing now in other places. Some of them are close to roadways, trails. I don't like walking by those at all or driving by them on One Hundred and Sixty-first Street. I can appreciate people that think that these things are kind of putting you in value. But I think that's kind of a narrow-minded perspective that the project is well-designed and the trees are cared for. Grow, plant some additional, I think we'll be fine.
I'm not opposed to the three-story. I just want to make sure that that transition between three-story and the trail with the trees, you know, and if you have to cut some down, replacing them, so it's an attractive transition.
I didn't even think about the example Kevin brought up with the
retreat on the moon.
Retreat on the Monon that both builds in. While I don't believe that they have multiple building materials, I think it's all horizontal siding on the backside of the dwelling. They're probably closest in appearance to what this would be in terms of the massing of the building and the backside where there's multiple windows, there's, those have decks.
Right.
On the backside, they just don't have multiple building materials. These would all have masonry on the first floor. But they could get the protection as a tree line, masonry on the first floor. That's a good example of what it would look like.
Yeah.
So I also think that the retreat on the Monon site probably has some elevation change relative to One Hundred and Sixty-first Street. It's going to make them feel even taller than they actually are.
Yeah.
So this is a very flat cross-section, whereas that other development that they're already starting from a plus elevation of something.
And there's no, and that trail is right there. I mean, it's like ten feet.
One of the fissures in examining this, they said, well, because there's a very low probability that they can make something work with a two-story product. What can we do to enhance the elevations to your point?
And you did a great job of that.
And then what it would like.
It's not a deal breaker for me. It's just more transition to the residential to the south, better.
So I'm just looking at what precedent has been set. Kevin brought the retreats on the Monon. I've been driving by there every day with the construction on thirty-three. And I look over and see, well, to me, the front of the retreats on the Monon is more comforting to the back, like you said, that they have the decks and you don't have the masonry like you will have. So I think that will enhance the visual appeal to a level. But just having three-story buildings along Monon, especially being buffered by the trees to begin with, that doesn't affect me. Because as I was looking at the Google Maps review, street view of the Monon, like, or no, no, sorry. Midland, like Kevin brought up. The more I was looking at it, thinking about it, well, people who use this trail are going to go by, you know, so fast on a bike, it's not, you're not even going to pay attention to it. It doesn't matter to them because if they're biking from Noblesville to Westfield or they're biking from their home to Kroger, whatever it is, just happening on the stuff. And if you're walking, it's such a short span that yes, does it diversify the just area? Yes, it does. But I don't think there's any issue with diversifying the area of three-story versus two-story. That's not such a huge difference, especially when you're above the trees. So that's just not your job.
So I think it's very self-offers or not, excuse me, from the existing residential, but that was bothering me. And I don't find, like you, John, I don't know the start of the word, but I don't think that the two-story next to the trail is going to bother you or whatever. And I was thinking of farther south on the Monon than what Kevin showed. Where you, you know, you've got three-story right up on the Monon and it's not unattractive or destroying quality building to bring on. So I'm not terribly concerned about this, but I wonder if a process, if you ever want to help everybody see the relative heights compared to the distances or the perspective with the existing tree line shown to scale. That illustration might be really helpful.
Is it the rear that's facing the trail or?
And here.
But those are going to be obviously not garage doors facing the trail. The access is from the north side. So you're looking at what I would say is the more attractive side of the building.
Yeah, absolutely. To Matty's point, and you might not be thinking this far south as I was. I know it's a completely different feel here. Basically, what the resident is, consider it's still the country versus in downtown Carmel, where yesterday right up on the Monon is three-story, but it has a beautiful architecture with a masonry and with what you're doing right around the masonry. That's what I was kind of comparing it to a little bit, and that's why I have no problem with it.
Same trail takes you on the backside of the road.
That's right.
Yeah.
Their trash would have been dumped on it.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, we didn't do a very good job.
It is, but I was, I was paying it back and forth trying to see how that setback would compare.
I mean, maybe out of line, but I mean, is, is there a market for people that want to live on it, like literally on a trail? Like, what's that market like? I mean, that may not be the right question to ask, but you know what I'm saying?
Nice.
Who is the buyer? Who's the buyer? Like, yeah.
Right.
It's a mix. And so, but all of our target areas are mostly based around a trail. But there's the Monon and Midland, that's where we're looking right now. Now the nickel plate and pictures as well. But that's kind of the focus for any of this info-type product. But it's a good mix of people moving there too. It's people who are downsizing and want no maintenance for a first-time home, not first-time home, era. Married couple, you know, executive type folks that don't want the maintenance when they come home, but want the access to the amenities and materials right there.
I think that is a great question, Kevin, because that's also something that I've thought of, or have been pointed out to me. For starting out homebuyer millennial generation, yes, this is definitely something that's attracted to us because we like walking, we like, you know, the mountains are far after this somewhere. So I think that's perfect. And then you hit the nail on the head. It's also a mix between us millennials and retirees that we're kind of in the same boat of not wanting to take care of yours. And we come back and friends that you have to take care of, of course I've been. But still, yeah, something like, yeah, that's perfect as I've been saying. Anyone that wants to walk, bike down to the market area with Kroger, get something to eat in the south or whatever, and what's going to be happening possibly later down the other side of itself.
John, you're showing two different sets in between these buildings by the Midland as trail connections. And obviously, then you'd have to take out the greenery there to make those connections.
There would be, but I'll widen a opening to attach the trail. That would be the one spot. And then in addition to that, we would connect to the middle along Gray Road. That would all be an area of this.
But it looks like you're showing two, and then in addition to the Gray Road.
Don't believe, I think the only connection is this one connection here, and then this is the second. That's, this is along the Gray Road right away, which would be in line where you see this side of it south.
Well, what's the opening in between the two? And there's no greenery, no, yeah.
Well, that's, that's just open space between the two dwellings. This is the first gray lines of path.
Oh, okay.
So there's twenty feet, there's twenty feet here with the path through it, the connection. And then there's twenty feet between the two dwellings, the buildings there that would have landscaping and and no path. So the trail connection that you referenced was, was to the gray line there and trail.
In your ordinance, is there a reason that you said the pond shall be included in the open space calculation? I mean, why can't you meet our standard as it is?
We weren't, we weren't sure based upon the open space percentage requirement. But I believe we can remove the, the, uh, open space requirement of the pond.
Yeah, and ponds by default do count toward open space as long as they're usable. What wouldn't count would be the gas pipeline per current ordinance. Because that's a pre-existing.
It can't be more than fifty percent.
Yeah, it can't be more, yeah, it can count, but not by more than fifty percent.
We did the calculation last week and we're confident now that we're above the percentage. Even without counting the, the, you know, as.
Also, I think that thought was that we would be amenitizing the pond, they have a fountain in it. And, you know, it'd be a trail would be within a reasonable and possible succeeding area, so.
Okay, that wasn't really fully evident where you would, you know. I'm not seeing a trail or anything around.
They were showing the trail that goes on the side of there. Is that the trail now that would be required for the U D L? Or is that something different? Usually there's the trail goes.
I guess what she's asking is that, is that the eight-foot asphalt, eight-foot wide asphalt path that's required along the road? Or is that a different?
That's, that's the trail that's in the gray road, yeah, what's in the gray road.
Eight-foot asphalt.
Sidewalk along the north side. It just, it just happens to be that it's close to the pond.
Right, right, no, that's fine.
We have to further remove the pond from those we've activated it by extending the path and into our service area.
Does the path have to be in the right way? Is that a requirement for Westview?
Yeah, it is. The perimeter path to wrap around a primary street like Gray Road. Not to say that there aren't exceptions out there where those things end up in easements from time to time to maybe avoid a tree or a utility fixture of some kind. But yeah, generally speaking, yes.
No, you're not going to have a burn-along gray with this, correct?
The ordinance would require that we have an auxiliary three-foot and minimum with planting that we're stressed. Kevin asked for an exception to that.
Okay. So I know that it looks like it's way off of Gray Road, but I've seen crazier things happen with cars going off the road and winding up in the retention ponds.
If it's within twenty-five feet of the right away, we're required to put ballers around the edge of the pond.
Oh, there's only twenty-five feet, huh? I've seen a lot go further than that.
If you have a preference that you'd like us to consider, we would be.
I'm just trying to think about how, how this is going to play out. And I mean, if there's like enough tree plantings and other things that could potentially stop the car from going in, you know, then that's one thing. But if it's if there's a lot of space there, then it just happens so much more frequently than you'd ever think that it could or should or, you know. I mean, obviously it never should.
If that were a standard which, you know, was vetted and the community decided to add a furnace located on five, that's it. What I'm saying is, it may, it may be an issue to support the community on that and not just exclusively related to this side.
We've had a number of cars in our retention.
And many of those on grant are in situations which were constructed prior to the requirement that they have the ballers around them. And now I think, you know, if you have Bridgewater, there are executive examples along their roads of where there are the ballers. And whether it's the multifamily area, really right there next to the rivers, there's a requirement that's in place there. If we fall under that window and those requirements will install the ballers and it's a potential.
And then speak to requirements that it be a timber guard.
Whatever, yeah.
Every, it's not, you're not metal, not a, I mean, that's an aesthetic thing that this.
Like a wooden bridges.
Yeah.
Can we go back and talk about those amenities a little bit? It sounds like you've got some ideas that maybe are in the ordinance. And that was one thing when I looked at this, I felt like there weren't really any amenities. I'm not sure is the dog park fenced. The picture showed that it was a fence with some playthings, but I wasn't sure if that was really it was happening or is it open grass? Then that was basically, I mean, sidewalks to me are. That's like our baseline, we need to have sidewalks. So.
And we're thinking of it, we're thinking of the trail connection is going to be a sidewalk that runs up to the, to the Midland. That's not something that's required. We're doing that for a good one. We encourage people to use it. The dog park, we can add some specificity regarding fencing and other things that are in there because that, it says dog park, the others, it'll just be a bench seating area. We can add some specificity there as well in terms of the number. And if you have preferences to what the bench looks like, that's about all the details on that.
No, but I do think succeeding areas, and you were talking about using the pond, which I think is a great idea. And I've seen neat ideas around the pond and seeding areas and people enjoying that a lot. So if we could get some more detail on what you might be thinking. It sounds like you've had some really nice ideas. They're just.
I think our dog park would definitely be fenced, yes. We would like to put some seeding areas. A lot of those things usually come when we get deeper into our engineering. It's what was, I know we have different requirements on the slope of our pond and the flat area, things along those lines. So it's typically in our process a little bit later down the road. But definitely if you have requirements ahead, we'd definitely be open to hear it for sure on the amount or whatnot.
Okay. I think we can, yeah, of course.
I like what you did with that, with the brick. I think it's great. I did like the first design. It was kind of like Hobbit or Harry Potter-like. But I like the new one too. And there's a lot more brick, which is a good thing for longevity, I think, for long-lasting. And I also think it would be difficult to develop this as a commercial site with the pipeline. And I think it'll be a nice transition to the residential. And I think it'll be a nice transition to the residential to the sound. So without giving you any more details, which sounds like you've already planned on doing, but maybe it makes some other people feel a little more comfortable.
So John, you touched on that pipeline. There's nothing that we. There except for us.
Correct.
Or well, that was.
The short answer is no. I think it's a it's it's not. It's not a simple topic. We've tried in other locations, both marathon did. There's panhandle on the marathon and I can't remember which of the two, but one is more responsive or receptive to something that's not just. Not anything. I mean, you can even see if you drive it. It's dark now, but the intersection on our 60 first and. Both road, they came in there bush hogged it all in last week and it was right through. They didn't plant the field this year. So you could tell. I mean, they. They're very protective in any encumbers on the easement issue as a as a nice.
Yeah, when they fly over and stuff and check out everything, they really have to have the good visuals. I don't think.
I will say we had conversations with them and asked about side the trail even like a natural trail and.
Yeah, it's pretty consistent. You can follow the park line, but you don't find.
I I.
Anything that changes.
Is there anything creative that others have done? And he said, I don't think so.
And if he knew about it, wouldn't tell.
We were in fact a little surprised that they allowed for two street crossings. Partially this wall that wasn't a. No. They have. They do have a lot of.
Just going back to G D's point over again with the unique architecture from last time. I know we've changed it up here and that's fine. But I do hope to get something like that in the future somewhere in Westfield. So I think that would be. Yeah, I think that'd be a good draw to just, you know, like different diverse sort of people here in Westfield.
I have a question that's off topic, not on this at all, but since you have experience here. We usually get developments, especially residential, and it's one developer, one builder. And so there we had to add anti-monotony clauses to our UDL so that we didn't get the offices that were exactly the same. Does it? Does a developer ever partner with another one so that you have two different products in a development? Or is that just a no? No, you don't?
Some some areas, but not this one specifically, but.
Right, right. And I'm not speaking about this one in general.
Yeah, we have in the past.
Usually what? Usually larger developments and more about the timeline of a build out or hundreds and hundreds of lots and get.
Right.
Cover different product lines.
Because Ben Creek did that with entries and holding. And when I went in there to look at some of the houses one day that I was just curious, you know, as I was going. That was one of the big things that the the realtor or the seller was saying, you know, it's two different developers. So it's really. Looks very different than a lot of our developments. Just curious.
Have we accumulated our issues list for the next meeting or is there something else coming to mind? Anything from the development teams? Any clarity on word ahead?
This is a helpful moment. I'm going to serve it out to something not like a best strategy, but much more. Days and are standing at the podium having the days up there like.
Yes.
Again, I think it was about a while back and we tried to have to do a return and they process things I think.
I think it's more comfortable for us too. I never liked being out there. I feel like.
Well, it's typical to have an exchange of ideas. This has been less difficult.
All right. Appreciate your time.
Just to recap, I think from from what we've gathered, there are really three changes you're you're expecting to see. One, looking at the actual setback after right of way dedication and editing that number in the ordinance accordingly. Adding specific requirements for the dog park and other amenities such as benches around the pond. And then removing the pond from the open space calculation.
I think Andre had another point.
It was it was suggestion. I think it might help everybody to be more comfortable with the. The height versus distance would be to do a cross section or be this not a requirement at all.
No, thank you. We we missed that.
We know we were.
I mean, it probably got all that in the modeling and what she's producing.
Did we miss any other? I'm kind of agreed upon comment. Okay. Great. Thank you for your time. Moving forward, what's your expect? Are you? Your plan is to make these revisions and come back for a recommendation at the next available? Is that your plan?
When is the the next meeting? Is that for the?
October 30th, yep.
The third.
The third.
A few weeks from today.
What would be the deadline for this one?
Friday, this Friday. First thing, first thing, Monday morning, more realistically, but it's Monday. I think we did. We did formally. Yeah, we discussed it.
Frankly, there's no difference for us because we're not looking at it over the weekend anyway.
I won't tell anyways.
Feel free to go back to your rocks tonight and and go on.
Thank you all.
Thank you. All other items on our agenda are continued for a future meeting. Then takes us down to the fourth in comments in general, anything from plan function members for other plan. Needed those from Chris for a downtown.
Well.
Or not. Pass options acceptable. You don't have one.
There's been some movement on the days for Sabre 32 as far as the letting dates, which is. Allowing MKSK a little more time to come back with these ideas. So it went into our weeks and so we're giving that. As an overall process, I am going to keep trying to move this forward and we will be in front of this group sometime before Christmas. I think we're, yeah, we'll move back to October at this point. So as we gather all this together, we'll we'll get back with this group.
By me and to some people, I think this would be a perfect setting for us to be able to have the regulations and discuss that. It's the second meeting in October. I think that'd be an awesome goal to have.
Or.
Yeah. Talk about kind of plus to Christmas.
So we'll keep, we'll be. This is an overall update to our comp plan and not just about Sabre 32. So the team that's a schedule, we need to keep that living full on. So what we will be that we are going to go along with Sabre things.
Keep shifting. All right. Thank you. City council liaison.
Well, the funny part is, is I forgot that I was going to need to do this tonight and I brought nothing. And I don't really remember all this stuff that we did either. So.
I guess I recall it. So it probably was easy to forget.
I think so. I think so. I was so just focused on our new workshop that I.
We can all go back and look at the agenda and ask questions if we have any of. Sorry, because everybody else, we don't have to.
And I had a question for John about something totally unrelated to what we're talking about, but I wanted to catch you before you.
Oh, okay.
That is one thing I wanted to say. I mean, Caleb's been giving us these great updates. Education for counselors and it's going to be handy to have here too. So you should probably check that out. He's got his. You could just go to YouTube channel and watch that too.
Can we? Can we get that? I mean, as planners, I think the councils, should we not add that budget?
You will. It's it's on. It's on our. Program. It was getting close, but then the decision was made, let's hold it for this kind of a meeting. Well, that until it's till we have a. So we've been doing this in like. Little bite sized pieces, more bite sized pieces, kind of. Elephant sized. There will be. Depends on the size of your bite again. So there will be four in total. We've done three. I think our hope was to. Maybe do a little bit more of a marathon session with this group because there's probably not. Not as much need to go get back to the.
A lot of this is just education and stuff that we already know.
Yeah. Have longer attention. We've been doing this longer. So.
Get one of the two.
So, yeah, to give, now that we have a more completed picture of the data. We'll be able to give a full presentation in this group. There is one more presentation to come for the council. So we'll probably wait till that that will get much more into the financial side. So. Purpose of this group may not have that part of it, but there is still a kind of a wrap up of the three parts that Caleb has been presenting on on our land use data. So we'll we'll put the bow on that part of it and present it to this group, probably in this format.
Is there? I started to listen to one, but you know, when you're tired and you're, I can't do it on a computer. It's better if you have some.
Sure.
Speaking team. Are there conclusions from from this stuff? I mean, is it just data or are there conclusions on?
No, intentionally, there's no conclusion being drawn. It is just presenting information. There will be, like I said, this fourth presentation, they will probably probably get into some of that. I'm guessing what what do we do with this information?
That that's my question, not so much the financial, but what do we do with it? Because when we did the comp plan, the the consultants that we have, we present, you can develop this way or this way or this way. And here are the consequences of those things. And that, you know.
So so just go back. We were. We were asked just to provide data.
Okay.
So that's what we've been doing. The the conclusion drawing piece is. I mean, everyone's going to draw their own conclusions, what this mean, right? But yeah, I, like I said, I think this fourth presentation will kind of give some framework for some analysis and what that some of this means. And and we can share again from the land use side of it, what what some of those are. And when we present to this group. Kind of leave the financial stuff out of it because that's not our world.
Right.
So much. I mean, it's probably good for you guys to know some of that, just in the back of your head, but I don't know. I don't have much more focus on it. But yeah, that's a good question. I know what happens with this information is, you know, we're going to continue to keep it updated now that we have it. Now that we have the data built into a usable format, we'll be able to keep it updated. At the very least annually, if not, you know, semi annually or quarterly or something, but.
It'll be really handy in the next company update.
Well, exactly. It really, it we will be in a great position whenever we do next from a comprehensive planning. We will already have that. That's like always a foundational part of a comp plan. Either brand new comp plan or a redo, like where are you? Right? Where are you today? And we already have that.
Yeah. I mean, it's like with the commercial that we had, where where do we have it located? What? You know, what have we got? Because it's hard to make a decision with no. Background.
Context. Yeah.
Yeah, context.
So we'll, yeah, absolutely. I I guess. One of the conclusions I think that that probably will be drawn is that, and I'm. Maybe jumping ahead here, but I think we'll see that. We have done a good job as a community following our comp plan. Right? I'm not saying there's not terms along the way, right? But as a big picture, we have, I think we've done a pretty good job and. I think we'll be able to see some of that represented in some of this data and try to put a little bit of maybe geography to some of this stuff so we can see. How it all, how the comp plan fits with what we have in the ground. So for better or worse, right? We're we're building out this plan that we have. That to me, I think that's a that's a testimony to this group. The predecessors, I mean, I think it's we've done a good job as a community of really sticking to this plan. I'm not sure every community can say that. So kudos.
Oh, I could go on. I'm sorry. The resolution 22113, that is the Grand Park repayment. That was passed and so the RDC will be making two different payments. Next year to the infrastructure improvement fund, which was part of the utility proceeds. A fund. So they're repaying a loan that they had with city councils. So that money is going to be fully repaid by. December 1st, 2023. And they just approved tonight a companion resolution at the RDC concerning the same. The Central Indiana Regional Development Authority, we did table that. We're not going to make a decision yet whether we want to become a member. There is a lot of good reasons to do so. Right now, though, we have concerns with not understanding the future implications for cost. To our citizens because it's not laid out really well in terms of what any kind of administrative costs, filing fees, all, you know. Various things and how that would impact our taxpayers. So we're trying to get more information. Let's see, North Point 2. PUD.
It was withdrawn.
It withdrew.
I know I was. So when you say withdrawn, was it fully withdrawn? Are they intending to refile now?
I mean, they always can refile something new, but yeah, no, it was withdrawn.
Fully. Okay.
Yeah.
Well, because there's there's some separate thing that might be coming before us. So it makes my brain not turn it off yet because.
Yeah, I'm not sure the, yeah.
It could be something could be coming back.
People knocking on whatever door aren't going away. I mean, right? There's still some need for something like that to happen, but. Yeah, that proposal was withdrawn.
Yes, we do have an interested advanced manufacturing facility that is looking for, you know, approximately 80 acres, if I'm not mistaken. Looking at several communities, not just ours. So that's in the process.
And for seat for just for your own awareness, if somebody wanted to refile a project on the North Point 2 site. Because they withdrew. There is, if it's the exact, if it's the same proposal that we saw from North Point 2, right? Then they have to wait six months to refile or to file something, to file new. Right? We would treat it like any filing. You would start from beginning, go through the normal process. If it was a different proposal, it's a have to wait three months from the withdrawal date till filing. So there's a little bit of a cool off period. But.
I'm confused. I mean, it just has nothing to do with North Point, but in the rules procedure that we just passed, it said, if a petition received a negative. Recommendation. If petitions were withdrawn, it said, if petitions that are withdrawn before they receive a recommendation, it's. Three months if they withdraw after receiving a negative recommendation, it's six months.
So I guess that's tough with this petition being one that was filed under the old rules. That technically they they would still follow that even through the new. It's kind of weird that it's a new petition. So you'd think it would go under the new rules, but.
Okay, so the old rule said.
Yeah, if it's negatively decided upon and I understand, I don't think we change, I didn't think we changed that rule. I can look back at the old ones.
So maybe that's.
If it's negatively decided upon, that means the final decision. So if the council voted it down. Then they would have to wait six months for a different petition and 12 months for a new petition.
So it doesn't apply to us.
No, it would apply to you for an overall development plan or primary plat and now the plat committee.
Okay.
It would apply to you for a detailed development plan, but for a zoning, it's the final decision.
It applies to the project, the process of the project.
And I just want to, I don't care about this one more day. And I just want to know what I wanted to understand what our rules say.
Sure.
So for the context of that rule, the cooling off period is characterized as, what is the definition of difference? Is there a short answer to that at all?
It's it's kind of subjective, right? I mean. We'd have to look long and hard at what they're proposing. I mean, I think if it's clearly if it's different uses, I mean, I think that's an easy, easy one.
The standards are largely. The standards are largely different, it's a different one.
But if it's, you know, I don't know, there's no, there's no guidance, let me put that in the rules about what that means.
So we're. Director's discretion, is that how it's written?
The next three items were things that were here before and received positive recommendation were all approved. Let's see, stormwater utility rate, that did also pass, so there will be a stepped increase over the next five years. Um, it's the same kind of format that we've had in terms of um. The units and how they're assessed in terms of your stormwater rate, but it's just gonna, you're gonna see this increase over the next five years. Um, let's see. Oh, next court companies, that's going to be in the grand millennium, the um uh medical facility. And they are looking to um. Do the ERA there and then qualifying them for abatement, so. That's a three story medical office building that'll be going in by the library, close to library. The Osborne Trails annexation, these things were only introduced at that point and publicly heard, there was no public. Comments on those annexations. And then Market District P U D amendment, that will be coming here. So that's just, and that is not a whole market, market district, and their position is really only concerning like outdoor storage and stuff.
Yes, and and you guys actually approved the development plan recently without the outdoor storage, that they they knew that. This was coming, it just needed to to work out, so this would be so they can all.
Are they going to have to refile their development plan stuff then?
No, if it's just an outdoor storage area and not increased building, it's considered a minor development plan amendment, so it can be approved administratively. Actually, as long as it meets all the regulations.
Okay.
What's the size of it relative to the car one?
It's like a third, I could spin small.
Oh, wow.
I think ours is thirty thousand square feet.
Uh, this one was admitted at forty nine thousand six hundred, I think it's a square foot. So it's almost like like.
Really good size still.
Is that about the size of a fresh market? I mean, fresh time?
Um, possibly a little.
No, bigger, yeah.
Bigger.
I'm just like thirty.
The old Marsh store in Village Park Plaza is seventy six thousand square foot, so it's two thirds of that.
Speaking of, can you guys give any kind of update on compliance with that? Um, with the Marsh people in that site in terms of. Their neglect of it?
Well.
And is there any interest in anyone coming there?
Yeah, we've heard, I think it's last week I heard from the owner, it's in New York. So that might be part of the reason there's glad they're not here, but. Yes, they are, they feel like they're really close with the tenant. Maybe even selling it. I don't, I don't know that they've decided, and that may be what they're hung up on, selling it or leasing it. That would go in that whole space, which. Would, I think, solve any maintenance problems that are currently out there now with the building and the parking lot.
Would it be a consistent use with what is there? Do you think? I mean.
It'd be a retail use. Yeah, it'd be a retail use, so. Abs- absent that, i- i- if that ends up not happening. Boy, our options for code enforcement of that are not fun or easy or quick. So not saying we can't do it, also not largely successful, I think, in some of these unsafe building situations. Um, especially getting the inside of the building cleaned up, and I mean, we'd have to do a lot to kind of. And it sounds like the county health department doesn't really have jurisdiction over this, it's just be us kind of going in, trying to. Commence a judge that this is a unsafe building and he's taking care of one way or another, abated in some way.
You know.
And then the site, we don't have maintenance requirements in our U D O for site improvements, which is kind of one of the things on my list for us to. Update in our U D O, we do for landscaping and that's about it. No other site improvements have like maintenance requirements for like pavement, parking lots and that kind of stuff. Building, you know, building facades and none of it is there, so it's all going to be complaint driven code enforcement. Go back and say, well, your site plan says this and. I mean, it's probably some hard arguments to make in front of a judge, frankly. So probably once we won't be very easily.
And as our community starts to age, those things are going to become more.
We are getting to that point, some things, so that's that's on my list of things that I'm. Look at as we do another, as we do U D O patches here coming up, but.
Is there a reason that we're not engaged in the thoroughfare plan stuff? And I know I brought this up at Public Works. We haven't discussed anything related to the thoroughfare, we're at APC in years that I can only think of.
Do you know anything about it? I don't either. We haven't been engaged.
And that's part of, that's part of our planning stuff. Some things where they're not.
Thousand six, since that was last updated, it's really.
Yeah, it was with our.
Yeah, I think thirteen was the last update.
Was there something that?
We did like a. But yeah, it's been a while. It's been, it's been a decade. You're right.
Well, this is just tangentially related, but mentioning the Marsh, and we never did talk with them or figure out. How that area should be redesigned given the thirty one project. I mean, that happened and. It almost doesn't make sense. Do you know what I mean, the way it is? And like, it could be operating much differently for the benefit of everybody?
You know, when we had the North Point and I talked to Andy about, Bear Hook about, you know. Commercial and where it wanted to be, and he said it wants to be on thirty one, and you know, major. Couldn't we just redevelop Village Park Plaza into a corporate, you know, I mean, did anybody ever think of that? It's not up us because we don't know, but I mean.
Yeah, I mean, you're starting to see that in Carmel.
That's what Carmel do for public.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sure we'd entertain something if it came here.
Because those stores in there are just struggle, you know, to. Ultra pass, you know.
Hamilton Crossing was a public thing, and that was. Very, very.
That was bad, yeah.
There's healthy stores in that areas. Real difficult.
It was.
For someone to work out, but if somebody's got to make enough use or enough money, things could happen.
That would be something to.
It would just seem that access and circulation could now be redone, you know, I mean, it wasn't optimal to start with and and now. It's just weird, you know, it's kind of intuitive to most people who would visit there, so it doesn't make make sense, especially for out of towners.
Probably speaking out of turn, but um just seeing what Fishers did with their old Marsh building on um. Street, over about off of Austinville. On uh, one hundred sixteen thousand, they just tore it completely down.
Yeah, a long time ago.
A little bit.
Well, the the library, for a while, the library moved into, that was Carmel, that's Carmel.
Yeah, Harlow Marsh still thinking.
Yeah.
But first Fishers, they just tore theirs down, um but since that they're right with the area, it's not making sense, uh road, it was road wise.
No, and it's part of the county tip. So, I mean, it would take, it would take doing, you know, us working with the county, and I don't know how much. Bond they have committed out of there already. I think it's probably sizable what they already have, but. Um, you know, it'd be nice to have that redone.
Um, not to go back, but just to, I want to make sure I had the clarification on it, script for Dave. Uh, just under fifty thousand for market districts and Carls, yes, a hundred twenty thousand.
What belong? It's getting a little concerned that our citizens have given up on swimming, but I see the. Also known as the Board of Pool Zoning.
Yeah, I forgot my stuff as well, but it's very easy to describe our meeting. We had very straightforward pool location variances that were granted. And that's it. Do you remember where they were, Rick here?
So Burgess Hill, that's um. And Lakes End, that's uh Lakeset, grassy branch or shady knout.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're having some issues in at.
Serenade.
Serenade. With the people who um have the houses along that western border. You know, remember there's a a tree, a reforestation that. Is part of somebody's yard, but they can't use it and they're not happy.
And they're now just finding out that they can't do those things.
I was like, they weren't told when they bought their properties, but they're, yeah, they're.
Never told, they had figured out on their own, and if they are told, they're told by somebody who were in the contract says they can't listen.
Yeah, so anyway, it's been an issue for some of the neighbors.
All right, moving on, there's no committee liaison to give a report on a meeting that hasn't happened yet, so. Community Development Department, have we exhausted everything you could possibly?
Things, so one plat committee, just a reminder, we will need to start getting that populated. We did have. A primary plat submitted actually for that medical office building, the Grand Millennium area for the company that and the library. Were submitted, so they will be going to tack tomorrow, and once compliant, we'll be ready to be docketed for plat committee, so. We could have need for a meeting as early as as October, would be the. Fourth Monday in October, so you you still have two meetings that you could potentially start um appointing people. So when we need it at the soonest, so we we need to start looking into that. Then also with this new um meeting arrangement where we're having one meeting for the public hearings and vote at. City Hall and then our second workshop meeting at City Services, we need to revisit the January meetings. So a few years ago, we stopped doing a first January Plan Commission meeting. Really in response to um frustrations and difficulty in review time for all parties. I mean, for you, for us, for developers, for the public, going to a Plan Commission meeting the day after a holiday. So we currently only have one meeting scheduled in January, and that's January seventeenth, that's a Tuesday for, because of Martin Luther King Day. So we we've laid out three options that we can look at. And granted, there are more, um, the others would probably involve moving V C A or having Plan Commission moved all the way to Wednesday. So the first would be doing what our rules and our schedules say we do, so that's having our first meeting January third. Which is the Tuesday after the holiday, New Year's is celebrated here January second, uh as far as workday. And then having our second meeting on the seventeenth, so this would be our normal schedule. Uh, the other options would be moving our first Plan Commission meeting, so our public hearing meeting. To the the seventeenth, which would generally be when our second meeting is. And turning around immediately the following week and doing the workshop. There's no. Need for there be to be two weeks between a public hearing and workshops and workshop items are being heard a month later. And then the third option, since we have a fifth Monday, a fifth week would be doing our meetings. The third Monday or the third Tuesday and the fifth Monday, so we're just trying to get your way in on that. We're hoping to have next year's calendar ready at your next meeting for approval. Um, so we'll re rethink this January and then probably do next January similarly.
Would you see a big difference between having them in back to back weeks versus seventeen to thirtieth? Or when whatever's going to be on the agenda pretty much be said, so, or or also, second question, is there a preference from staff?
I think the easier option for us would be doing them back to back just because coming off of this second meeting. That would leave almost no time for revision, so if someone comes to their workshop meeting here, they really need to get us revisions by Wednesday. The next week, so this option is probably best for us as a way to do it, avoiding the holiday week and not. Going into Wednesday or or moving V C A to Wednesday, so we can have Plan Commission on Tuesday.
I think we should not have it on the third, if that's just not going to work, it hasn't in the past.
Yeah.
And I think whatever you guys decide works best for you in scheduling, if it's done, is my my preference.
Yeah, if you say seventeen twenty fourth is preferable, then let's do that.
Okay. Okay, that's all I.
We're taking Tuesdays now.
At least for January, yeah.
Um, the only, the only other thing I wanted to add, I know at the last meeting, I kind of mentioned that we were going to be talking about the. Stuff that the mayor talked about with us as a group earlier this year. As we got into that as a team, trying to kind of put some framework to that discussion, so it's not just a, an open ended. Set of questions without a little bit of framework to it, um to hopefully make it more meaningful and productive. Um, we just ended up having more questions for the mayor, so we're we're going to put that on pause until we can meet with him. Hopefully, we'll have this in thirty days. That's my hope. We'll be able to get with him as a team, kind of get a little bit better. Understanding of some of the 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 goals and vision of of that discussion, so we can. Be asking the right type of question to go through the right exercises, so. We haven't forgotten about it, it just, it became a little more challenging as we really started to think about. How do we make that a productive conversation, so.
It's a little open.
It is, yeah, open ended is fine, but. Hoping to come out of the conversation with some. Some answers.
Get my wheels spinning a little bit to help us kind of focus, um, yeah, I'm just thinking aloud. Would it be beneficial, the question that pops in my mind is, how big do we want this to be? Uh, would it be beneficial to uh, kind of designate uh northwest, southwest, southeast, northeast? Uh, tackle each one of those districts, so to speak, individually in in different meetings and then. Like you're kind of like Kiel's doing, presentation wise, or and tackle them all, then one final fifth meeting or. Kind of jump into it.
Possibly, I think a lot of, some of those quarters are pretty much built out already, so.
You know, I, the mayor said many, many times, how big do we want to be? And I think the overall question, I think it's it's almost a philosophical or what do we want our community to be like?
Right.
And we have to figure that out first.
Right, that's where we started kind of struggling a little bit as a team, like. I don't know, I mean, maybe he really is asking how big do we really want to be as a population? I'm not sure that's really the question. I think it's that. I think it's how do we want to grow, uh how do we want to? Now that, now that really our cop plan is, for all intents and purposes. I say ninety percent built out, like what is next for our community?
Well, that's almost a conversation too that we should be having with our school, you know. Everything that we do impacts them, and how big do we want that school district to be? Because obviously, they're going to be in a situation where they're going to have to build a second high school if we.
And they want to know that.
Exactly, that's what I mean, so, and I don't mean to say that us deciding, I'm talking about it. But it's like, we have to have a community conversation with the other stakeholders, because it's not just how we want land use or, you know.
Well, when I, you know, the big part of the cop plan, the last two, at least that I've been involved in. Has been the community saying, this is the way we want to be. And it's like, what is the the slogan they use, small town charm, big zip.
No, that's been a long time ago.
You know, if you go through the cop plan, the first thing that that consultants did on both of the last two that I've been through is say. What do you want to be like? And they all said, we don't want to be like Carmel, we don't want to be like Fishers. We we like the small town atmosphere, but we want services, quality services and lots of stuff like that. So I think to me, when you talk about how big do we want to be, that's kind of where I go is, what do you mean by? How big, you know, do you want to just have density? Is it the type of, you know?
Yeah, and I think unfortunately, just connecting the two, the schools and density, uh. Growing our borders, well, whatever it may be, the ship has already sailed population wise, so we're we're going to be grown, that's something we we don't have control over.
I disagree.
Well, everything.
That's been zone, there's lots of things that have been zoned that.
Yeah, exactly.
We're not going to stop where we are now.
Right, right.
With what you've been visiting at council meetings, it's just like, written on the wall. Uh, uh, what all's been approved and zoned, et cetera.
Yeah, we can change that.
Yeah, can't change that, so yes, that's more along the lines in my mind of how big we want to be is order wise. You know, how do we control that in updating the comp plan with maybe where the different new zones or.
Or having a lot of luck from what we have, that left.
Yes, yeah, absolutely, that, another one of those questions was, how is infill? Yes, yeah, absolutely. That, uh, another one of those questions was how is infill, you know, the, so.
Yeah, and I think those are exactly kind of the, the questions. So like I said, we're starting to try to put some. Give the discussion a little bit of guy, guidance. So it's not just an open-ended and we end up with nine different answers and. Not, not a productive session, frankly. So that's. As we work through that, again, hopefully we'll be ready in, at this meeting in October to have that conversation. May depend too on what the rest of the agenda looks like. I don't want it to be here till midnight.
Can we use what we have in the current cop plan, which people continue to say they like? I mean, I know the mayor really says, I think it's a good. Can we use the. The beginning of that, which talked about what people wanted us to be as kind of a framework?
Yeah, yeah.
And we can agree on it or not agree, but that's a place to start.
Yeah, let's not throw that away. Let's use it as a framework.
That as to where we are, right? I mean, I think it's served, it served. Served us well, if you're gonna say.
The population projections too, there was some of the models that were fairly accurate, actually, in the last comp plan, which is funny to think that. Something that long ago could have been fairly accurate, not all of them, but I mean, we're.
The range, right?
Yeah, sort of the range. I mean, it, it's, it seems to kind of coincide and I think it'd be an interesting exercise to know. You know, about how many um permits and stuff we've done and then if we extrapolate that out, just given, I mean, kind of like if you keep on a. Similar track, where did that get you when?
Yeah.
You know, and I think that kind of be handy information to have in that kind of discussion sometimes.
Sure. Yeah, I think now that, now that we have this data organized in a way that we can, we can do that, certainly with what we've got zoned already. That's unbuilt. That's an easy, we can, we can use some pretty quick, easy projections out to give an, give an idea.
It would be interesting to see what's the current, what the, the data that you've collected, what the pie chart would look like versus what the pie chart looked like in the last comp plan.
Yeah.
I appreciate you.
And I'd say our lot sizes are probably a lot smaller than what I thought we, we were gonna be getting back when we get that comp plan.
Yeah.
Just personally, what I've seen happen over the years in terms of trends.
Yeah, me too. But, and I've been, I'll talk to you. I, I just have a question about. You know, there are communities I know that in, in commercial and maybe Andre knows this. Um, where they give a proportion, you can only take up a certain percent of the lot, cover it with a building.
So I, I didn't know.
I mean, lot coverage standards are uncommon in zoning ordinances. We don't have them.
Right, except I think thirty-one. Okay, I was just curious because I think about some developments that we thought, wow, that's gonna be a good-sized lot. But then the developers are building bigger houses, so it takes up more of the lot and it changes the whole character break that was gonna be there. So, just curious.
Yeah, that's good. Yeah, I, most commonly, I think we, we see them in, in a non-residential setting, but I think we certainly could apply that to the residential. But I don't know if it couldn't. Yeah, we don't currently.
We are there, actually. Is there a motion to adjourn the festivities? Seconded by Mr. Curdy. And since we have no virtual attendees, this can be a voice vote of all in favor. Aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Honanus. At eight fifty-four P M.